Okay, so we'll start this meeting for the election results for the Board of Canvassers. And Brooke, I guess you get to take it. Thank you.
Thanks, Diane. Earlier today, you were emailed a copy of the official election results from Salt Lake County Elections Office. The final results for the 2021 primary elections for Murray City Mayor are as followed. Clark Boland received 2,483 votes. Adam Kent Fitzgerald received 413 votes. Brett A. Hells received 4,952 votes. And Alex Enartizba received 356 votes. There are 28,531 eligible registered voters in Murray, and of that, 8,204 votes were counted. That's 28.89%. We did have three candidates running for Council District 4. However, one of the candidates was disqualified, and that's why that race was nullified, which there was no votes tabulated for that race. With that in mind, the following candidates will be on the ballot for the general election. Clark Boland and Brett A. Hells will be for Murray City Mayor. Joe Silverswig and Pamela J. Carter will be on the ballot for Council District 2. Darren Rassison and Diane Turner will be on the ballot for Council District 4. You've all received a detailed report of the votes cast, and tonight I'm asking the council to adopt the resolution certifying the election results, and then ask if you have any questions for me.
Okay, do you have any questions for Brooke? No? Okay, so I guess I need a motion?
Yep.
A motion ratifying the results?
Yes.
Okay, I would appreciate a motion ratifying the results.
If I could turn on my mic. I will make a motion that we ratify the results from the general election or from the primary?
Primary.
The primaries?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
For 2021.
2021, yes.
For 2021. It's hard when it's not on our agenda, so sorry. I'll second.
Thank you. And then we'll do a roll call, and I'll do the vote right now. Mayor Camp?
Aye.
Ms. Martinez?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Ms. Dominguez?
Aye.
Ms. Turner?
Aye.
And Mr. Hells?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we will be adjourned. Okay, it's 5:15, and I'd like to welcome everyone to the Murray City Municipal Council Committee of the Whole for August 24, 2021. And let's see, we'll start out with approval of the minutes for the mixed-use workshop of June 29, 2021. Are there any changes? Any questions, comments about those minutes? If not, then I would appreciate a motion.
I will move. We approve those minutes.
And I'll second that.
All right, has been approved, and now we need to... Well, I guess I'll just say, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Are there any opposed? I didn't hear any, so the motion passes. Now, we'll start with the discussion items. Number one is discussion on House Bill 244 bond parameters, and Brenda Moore will be presenting. Welcome, Brenda.
Thank you for having us. And then I am going to actually have Matt from Stifel kind of give a presentation on the actual bond parameters.
Okay.
But what brought this around was the House Bill 244, which is allowing us or giving us $500,000 a year for the next 15 years for transportation projects. Then the state decided to ask us if we wanted to use their bonding capacity to bond on that and then use the $500,000 for payments. So we analyzed that, and what they would charge is 0.5% above whatever rate they got. So we had Matt go through and do an analysis, and we figured out we could borrow money for cheaper than the 0.5 that the state would surplus onto their rate. So that's why we're here. We do have close to $10 million or more dollars' worth of street projects out there. What this will allow us to do is to get ahead of, hopefully, inflation a little bit. The bonding rates are so low, and the cost of doing road and street projects is going up. It would allow us to kind of, hopefully, hedge against inflation, get some of our big projects done that we would have to save for multiple years at this $500,000 to get them accomplished. So that's kind of the thinking of why we would like to bond. And then I will let Matt give you a little presentation of where the market is and what we think will happen, and what we think we're doing.
Welcome, Matt.
I want to commend Brooke for putting bonds first on the agenda. I think there's a book called Eat the Frog First, and I Am That Frog, and then the rest of your meal is better, so we'll get through this. But thank you for having me, and what a privilege it is to serve as your financial advisor and a privilege to work with Brenda and GL and the city. Preston Kirk and I really appreciate that. Brenda gave a great overview at the Genesis for this discussion, but I'll just briefly go over the marketplace just to really paint a picture. And if I could summarize it in one sentence, interest rates are very low. The pandemic has certainly brought challenges, but it has also brought very low interest rates. And as you look at the chart at the top of your screen, in the tax-exempt bond market, we have various benchmarks, and probably the most applicable to the city would be what we call the AAA, so AAA-rated MMD benchmark. And MMD stands for municipal market data. So it's basically AAA, a basket of AAA-rated bonds that are priced on a daily basis, 20-year maturity, and they... Basically, it's a spot rate, and they calculate it every day, and then you draw a line between those every day, and that's what you see on that table. And you can see, when the city issued the lease revenue bonds last year, we're essentially close to where we were last year. And so interest rates did go up at the beginning of this year, but they've come back down. And so going to the lower right-hand corner of your screen, that represents the yield curve. So bonds have an interest rate in every year, so here the city's looking at a 15-year bond issuance. You'll have an interest rate in year one, year two, year three, and that creates a yield curve. And all along that yield curve, you can see the blue line is at the bottom of those vertical light blue lines. And those vertical light blue lines are what those annual interest rates have been in the last 10 years. So, and if you go back 10 years, right, we were right at the height of the credit crisis, and interest rates were low then. So we're really at a very... From a bonding perspective, a good spot if you're needing to do some capital projects. So I'm happy to answer any questions about the marketplace, but I just wanted to be brief on that. I could talk forever on it, and you don't want that, but...
No, we don't.
Thank you. Very good. So cut to the parameters. The council, as it has in the past, will consider a resolution adopting bond parameters. And essentially, that is the only formal action that the council will take on the bonds, but it is the first legally required step in the bonding process. And essentially, the bond parameters that the council sets, you're creating a box. And as long by way of maximum paramount, maximum interest rate, maximum term, and then you delegate the authority to the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and to the finance director, to Brenda, the ability to accept the final terms of the bonds when the bonds sell in the marketplace. And that just gives us flexibility so that we don't have to price bonds on a night that the council meets, and we can take advantage of a better market day if it's a Wednesday or a Thursday. But as long as the bonds fit within this box, which they will... And so as you consider the parameters resolution, we're looking at a maximum par amount of $6.75 million, maximum interest rate of 5%. And I will say, having just spoken on the market, the city's interest rate will be much lower than the 5%. If we were in the market today, you would be close to about 1.5%. So as we compare, when the city issued bonds for the fire station in 2018, those were 13-year bonds that matured in 2031, and those were issued at 2.7%. So we're issuing 15-year bonds at approximately 1.5%. So that's a really good environment.
Matt, we'd like to refinance that.
Yeah, let's do it. Let's do it, absolutely, Brett. And so again, we're looking at this maximum term of 16 years as well. The reason it's 16 and not 15 is depending on when you close on the bonds relative to when you make your first payment, the term might be 15.1 years or 15.2. And so we have to kind of round up to that 16. But it'll be essentially a 15-year bond commensurate with the state statute. And then again, as I mentioned, the designated officers. And so when the bond's priced, essentially, we'll have numbers finalized, and then it goes to the mayor and to Brenda to accept those final terms. Let me pause there and answer any questions you might have on the parameters. I will say, and for the public's benefit, Murray City has a tremendous bonding history. And if you look at the city's bonding capacity on its sales tax revenue stream, I always recommend to other cities and counties to really maintain that sales tax revenue stream. So if you can avoid using that stream for some projects, do it, because it's that revenue stream that really you can issue bonds for anything. In 2016, the city bought some land. 2018, you financed a fire station. Now you're looking at roads. So it's a very flexible stream, and I just want to commend the city for its historical, really, methodology in determining the best avenues for bond issuance. For example, for the city hall, you issued lease revenue bonds, which preserved the capacity in the sales tax revenue stream. So this is a good use of that revenue stream. You have a lot of capacity. Not that the city would ever maximize its capacity, but you have about $125 million in bonding capacity on your current revenue stream, looking at last year's over $20 million. Question?
Very perceptive. I'm just wondering, what do we have outstanding at this point in bonding, in our bond balance? Where are we at?
10.5 million outstanding on the 2016 and 2018 combined.
10.5 million? That's...
Outstanding principle, yes.
Okay.
And so you have really a lot of capacity in that revenue stream.
But we wouldn't want to use that, obviously.
Right.
Otherwise, we wouldn't be very responsible, so...
That's exactly right. And your bond ratings reflect the fact that you've been debt-averse on the revenue stream. Your sales tax revenues are rated AA by Standard &amp; Poor's, which is a really tremendous bond rating, and it takes into account exactly that, the fact that you haven't maxed out that capacity. I do want to say the city does have, in its bond covenants, as we speak about this capacity, the city does have, in its current bond covenants, since essentially you've promised investors that you won't bond to a point where you're reaching this minimum coverage, which I'll explain just very briefly. So essentially, when you issue bonds, you have to tell investors that we will not maximize our debt on this revenue stream, and you have to maintain a minimum of $2 in gross revenues per $1 in debt service. So that's your minimum debt service coverage, we call it. So it's a 2.0 coverage calculation, minimum threshold. Based on last year's revenues at the 22.3 and the current debt service on the 2016 and 2018 sales tax revenue bonds, you're bringing in $17 in sales tax revenues per dollar of debt service. So that sales tax coverage ratio is very high, which is a very positive mark for your credit rating. When these bonds are issued, it will cut into that capacity, but you'll still be well above your counterpart cities in the state. Most cities, I would say, or a lot, have approximately three to eight times coverage, and you'll be still around 13, 14 times coverage even after we issue these bonds. So you'll compare very favorably. Any questions on that? Well, essentially, that was the majority of what I wanted to cover. A little bit on the process that you're familiar with. Step one is adopting or considering that parameters resolution. After that is done, there is a notice of bonds for the public and a public hearing that you will hold. And after that public hearing, there's no other action that the council has to take, but there are some steps in the bonding process that... Essentially drafting the documents and GL is so good at that, and Brenda's certainly involved in that, and bond ratings and selling the bonds. And so that's a process we'll keep you all apprised of, and we'll time it appropriately as well. One of the considerations that we've discussed with Brenda is you don't necessarily want to bond too soon before you have to write your first check from the bond proceeds. Otherwise, you've borrowed and funds are sitting there. But we also want to capture the market while we can, so we're going to watch that very closely.
And about what will the payments be?
So the payments will be about $500,000.
Okay.
So essentially, you'll make the payment, although you're pledging your city's sales tax revenues, you'll pay it with this money that the legislature has promised you for roads.
Okay, good. So it'll... Okay. All right, any other questions?
Brenda and GL, have I forgotten anything? Again, it's dangerous when you have a bond guy talking. We can just go on and on and on.
Matt, what's the highest bond rate? Is it AAA still, or just...
The highest bond rating is AAA.
Okay.
Yep, and you're...
We're right next to, are we?
You're right there.
Sometimes AA is just the same, so anyway.
This is good.
Okay.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you so much. All right, we're right on time. Number two is discussion on fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget amendments. Brenda, it's you again.
So this is our standard. Every year, we have to roll projects forward because nothing ever finishes right at June 30th, and so we're moving things between budget years. And the state law does not allow us to automatically roll budget between periods. I thought that, since some of you have probably seen some of these projects that were on the memo that I sent out, multiple years, I thought I would just do a quick summary of kind of what's happening in the CIP fund, just as a reminder for you of how this is all working. Let's start with this bond or this budget amendment receives and allocates grants that have been awarded since I prepared the budget in March. I mean, it takes a while for grants to come in, so it receives those. It reconciles changes in the benefits budgets due to health insurance changes. There are... In the general fund, it turned out to be pretty even. I just have to move things between departments, which requires your approval for me to move budget from the police department to the fire department or et cetera around, as the health insurance requires. The water fund and the risk fund needed a little more. I think in the water fund, we had someone who went from opt-out to single in a small department. That's a $6,000 change, so that's why that is in there. We're rolling forward budgets from restricted funds, donations, Class C, and the projects in process and the CIP savings budgets, because it's easier for me to track and for people to know when they're saving money if they have a budget line item in the CIP fund that says, "Fire's got this equipment." He may not spend it this year because he's waiting for his fire truck next year, but he's got it, and he knows it's there, and he's ready to go. So a sample of this. I think you guys are all familiar with pavilions. Every single year since I got here in 2011, we've talked about pavilions. We finally approved a budget in fiscal year 20 of $2 million. They'd already saved $420,000 from 2019. In 2020, they spent $1,001,000, so they returned to reserves $1.2 million. And in 2021, we rolled forward that $1.2, decided to add bathrooms to Pavilion Number 5, decided that our estimate was a little off when we originally said we're going to do five pavilions for $2 million, and so we added another $300,000. Last year, they spent $1.4 million, so they're rolling back into reserves $403,000. So this amendment takes that $403,000 and puts it back into its budget so they can finish Pavilion Number 5. The pool parking lot, this one's interesting. You've probably seen that for every year. Fiscal year 19, Water decides they're going to move that pump well and use part of the parking lot for that, so we're going to have to repave the parking lot, put that in the budget. They plan it, they don't get it done. Fiscal year 20, it goes back into reserves, it comes out of reserves. 21, they finally finished that pump wellhouse, we repaved the parking lot. Turns out, it was only $140,000. So this year, I'm going to roll the... So 160 went into reserves. We're pulling the 160 back out and going to do maintenance on other parks' parking lots. So that same money that was designed for that is going to use for other parking lots. So that's kind of a sample of how everything kind of works in the CIP fund. That's why some of these things you see multiple years. There are some of them that I have seen multiple years that I am telling them if they don't spend it, it's going to go away because they obviously don't need it. But there are... So they've been put on notice, and it's usually small stuff. So there are some things, projects that we have finished, that I'm allowing the reserves to go back in and stay there in the CIP fund. The building department, we had building abatement and some downtown environmental stuff we had reserved. Currently, there are no buildings in the city that we can identify as we might have to help with abatement, fixing, whatever, that problem. So we're going to allow those to go back into the CIP reserves. If anything does come up, we'll have a budget opening for it. IT had some antivirus software that they had budgeted for, decided our current software would work if we fixed it appropriately, and they did that. Fire Station 81, we returned $67,000 back into reserves. It had gone over budget, so if a project goes over budget, I don't let the fire department keep their remaining amount. It's going to go back into reserves for something else, probably go towards a fire truck eventually. It all does. Document management software, this is an example of something that we have just kind of reprogrammed a little bit. We had budgeted $75,000 for that. We've decided that we don't need that software. Tyler Munus will do it, but we do need some training. So we are going to keep $20,000, roll it forward for training possibly on that. And then we're going to use part of it for iWorks permit software, so that the building permits can go totally paperless and do online permit entry, so people can get their building permits online, pay for it online, do it all, never have to come into our office. That's the goal. So we have reprogrammed some of the IT software money for that and then left some of it to go back into reserves.
That would be awesome.
So that, yeah. That is just kind of a sample of how the CIP works and how we let the department heads decide what is their priority, along with what is the city's priority. And if they can find something cheaper and do it a different way than we initially budgeted for and find it cheaper, they can do something else, too. Since the memo that I put out, I told you that that was going to change. So we have received another grant for $6,450. I remembered that I need to roll the state alcohol funds forward so that they can purchase camera storage is usually what they do, car cameras and camera storage, because that is very expensive. I found an error, which I guess I'm not completely perfect. There was a typo in the fleet assessment for streets, and so I needed to pull $30,000 more and fix that for them, for fleet mostly. And Power Fund, I left one of their projects off the roll forward, which is the pole testing, where they're going to go around and test all of their poles and make sure that they are not in danger of falling over if somebody climbs them. We found two more grants, a $9,000 grant to help re-glaze the mansion windows as we do repairs on those. And the state library is giving us some of their APRA money for electronic books, $21,881 to supplement and get more electronic books. And I've already put in my order of what I want her to have, so... So that is kind of how the budget opening goes. There's a whole lot of other stuff in that memo. It's all just rolling forward. Are there any questions on any of the projects, any of the stuff we're going to roll forward?
Questions for Brenda?
No.
Great job on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Okay, number three, discussion on proposed changes to police officer salaries. Craig Burnett and Mayor Camp.
Thank you. I'll start out with a quick overview. We have Chief Burnett here to speak to the matter, and also, if you have questions, Robin Colton is here, and finance questions can be answered by Brenda. But if you've been paying attention at all to the news, you've seen the, what's been called a crisis in Salt Lake City for police officers. Police officers are leaving, and it's not just in Salt Lake City, although Salt Lake City's been getting a lot of the press. And they're retiring or moving to other departments or moving out of police work altogether. And the Salt Lake City Council recognized this dilemma and did quite a huge boost in salaries for the police officers to retain them. Now, I guess huge is relative, because they were kind of lagging behind up until this year because of what we did with our step plan three, four years ago. We're in a very, very, very good position with salaries, one of the top for police officers. But what has happened now recently, and fast and furiously, is once Salt Lake City boosted salaries up, West Valley immediately did, as well as other departments. And you can see on the spreadsheet that was included in the packet what some of these agencies have done. And I'm not going to go down and read all of them. Chief Burnett can speak to the ones that he would like to. But in a nutshell, what this has done is this has left Murray City in a position where we are now 15, over 15% below the average on starting officers. We're still good at the top, and of course, we would like to do a... And we will need to do a full study going into next year's budget. But in the meantime, we are not going to be able to recruit any officers, and we have several openings. In fact, we had one officer that accepted a position with us, and then another city raised their starting salary, and he left. He resigned before he started and went to work for another city. And so what we're proposing to do is to raise the lower end of the pay scale up to where we're within market, as you can see at the very bottom there, to a difference of plus about 4 tenths of a percent. So the top of the scale remains the same. The annual cost, and that's why we're here, is estimated at about $412,000 to do this for this year. Incidentally, because of retirements and so forth and other openings, the police department turned back about $500,000 in salary from last year. So what we would really be asking you to do is to allow that money to be rolled back from reserves back to the police department and to fund this difference. So that's it in a nutshell. That's what we're asking to do, and we're asking to do... That's what we're asking to do, and we're asking to do it rather quickly. This would be on a budget opening for, if, if we get the nod from you tonight for the next council meeting. So with that, Chief Burnett?
Thank you. I don't know what else to say. Very well covered. But you know, it has been, it's been a crazy, what, six weeks? This has all been since budget started. You know, we all started our new budgets in July, Salt Lake City opened the floodgates, and it was just, it's been crazy to watch everybody just do what they're doing and, and there, excuse me, others that are sitting back waiting to see where everyone's going so they can determine what they need to do. So, you know, we've been sitting in a really good position for a long time, and I think we've been very, the envy of a lot of cities with our step plan across the board in the city. And I think what we're seeing is a lot of these, of the other entities are going in and starting step plans, and they're catching up with, with where we were at and with what you did for us four years ago. But as we were sitting here, the first, when Salt Lake City started, it was like, okay, if we do a little bit, we'll be all right. But then you watch everybody just kind of go a little higher and a little higher, and it's, it's, it's put us to the point, like I said, our, we have, currently have two vacancies that we need to recruit for and say are, we're almost $4 an hour behind the average for starting pay. And so what we're really looking at doing is trying, like the mayor said, working mainly with our, with our lower end. We, last, in the last 18 months, we've lost 12 members of our department, or 11, excuse me. Six to retirements, four to resignations, and three of those went to another, to another agency before all this started, one that had came, come in and were paying more, and one just got out of law enforcement altogether, and then one that I guess resigned, but one of those resignations. So I guess what I'm saying is, those that we've lost that either haven't gone to retirement, the majority have left and gone somewhere else. And where we're concerned about is the same thing as everyone else, is that middle group, those from zero to about 10 years. And they can go somewhere else and make more money. And it's interesting to watch them all talk about, all right, what's going to happen here, what's going to happen there? We want to stay, but what are you going to do for us? And so I think it's imperative that we look at doing something to save the good employees that we have, help us attract new employees, but, but also to hang on to the ones we have. I don't want to lose anyone else to another agency and have to go, excuse me, through the training for that. And we, 30% of our department is right now zero to five years. That's pretty steep, and that's the group that we could, that we'd be looking at losing. So, you know, we've, we've looked at moving everybody in the pay scale that would help with the lower end, but it also helps those throughout the process to, so we don't end up with compression. It's not doing anything with those who are redlined right now, but like I say, that's what we're, we're hoping to do, or at least talk about in the upcoming budget, so. Questions?
I mean, this sounds like a lot, 412,000, but when you offset it with the cost for training, how much does it cost to train when you lose an officer?
Well, we're, we're into, well, just give you an example. Right now, we've, we've been hiring and working for probably the last year, getting people on the road. And we've got two that have finished the academy and are out, and now we're actually working on their own. They've been through the training. We have three, four currently in field training, and we have three in the academy, and they will all come out staggering between now and, and about October. So it's usually about a year from the time we hire someone until they're actually filling a void. If we have to send them to the academy, that's about three plus months where, a lot of times we are paying them to go to the academy. So they're on our payroll, so we're, we've got three to four months of pay and then another three months of training. So it's, it's six to nine months, depending on where we pick them up and whether they have any training or if they've been through the academy. So it's usually close to a year. So you can figure almost a year's worth of salary per employee. And while they're in training, we're still down those positions. So currently, we have these officers in training and some that are in field training, but we're still have, we're down those six and the other six, you know, that's, that's, or we're down, I'm losing all track of, but about seven, I think, seven positions right now that we're, plus the two. So about nine positions that we're down. So we're running short in, in our, in our detectives. We haven't refilled, backfilled two of our detective positions. The rest of those are all patrol. Those are the ones that are out there handling the calls, when you and your neighbors call, traffic accidents, everything else. So we have to backfill those with overtime. And, oh, yeah, for that, that year, it's, it's costing us, the money to pay the people in training, it's also costing us overtime on top of that. So, you know.
Plus the safety of our citizens, and that's...
The more, the more experienced people we can hang on to, the better we all are. And that's not to say that the young, these are, no, the thing is, our pool is, is very shallow as far as hiring. And it's not just us, it's everyone. It's kind of just a lot of different reasons these days that it's, it's a struggle to get people who want to do this job. But we're finding good quality people. I mean, I can't believe the quality of the majority of the people that we interview. And so we get into these wars, like I lost the one to West Jordan. And, you know, you're, we're all going after the same ones. And now with all of this, we're starting to eat our own. They're going after each other and pulling officers from other departments to look and go, well, I can go over here and make more money. And then it just kind of cycles down. It's a little rough.
It used to be where it was almost like, not a threat, but almost like, well, I could go here, and sometimes they didn't, but now they are.
Yeah, they are. Especially the younger generation. They look for what's best for them right now. It may not really be that great in the long run, but that's, when you're trying to, you're trying to make ends meet and paying house payments or whatever and raising families, you go where you're comfortable and you think you're going to...
Yeah, you're paying, you're paying hundreds of thousands of dollars to train and, and to lose and just, which, and then this is an opportunity to put our money where our mouth is, where Brenda said, yeah, if they give it back, and then we'll return it. Well, we're in that situation right here, so.
And I think, and what we're looking at is, with the exception of the upper command in the police department, we're looking at trying to impact our police officers and our, and our first line supervisors, our sergeants, which would, this is who this would impact and move them in the, the step plan. What we're looking at is just moving them up some steps to, to the point where we, the first several years were really competitive, and then when we get up on our top end, even doing this, we're okay, but we're, we're falling. And that's the stuff that we've talked about that we need to look at.
Yeah, you talked, I think Diane hit this just a second ago. Not only are we talking about the money to train, but the experience will lose. You can't, you can't train experience. And I think, I mean, this is a chunk of change, but when I call 911 and I want an officer, I want somebody that's experienced and can handle it. And if we're, if we're at the point of losing those type of officers to, to other agencies, we, we need to do something, we need to do it fast.
Appreciate that. There's a lot of things that keep me up at night and have given me gray hair. My kids all claim it, but it's all these other kids, you know? The two biggest things I worry about, the citizens and, and the safety and, and, you know, what, what crime's going on? What can we do? How can we do it? How do we keep, how do we make sure everybody feels safe? But beyond that is, man, I worry about these, these officers, these kids out there, and I want them to be safe, and I need them to feel comfortable.
Well, I just wanted to say, I commend that you worry about these things because I think we all do. And it is, it's, it's something that's been ongoing in terms of the conversation and how we can protect each other in our city. But how do we protect you guys? I mean, I know that's away from the conversation that's happening, but how do we give you a sense of protection and value within our city and not just monetarily to sustain? Because I think that's, for me, it would be, I appreciate you one-on-one, you know, or having those conversations with yourself or the staff, or even saying it now, you know, we really appreciate everyone that's out there patrolling and the detectives. And there's a reason why people come to Murray and work for Murray, so how can we sustain that longevity as well?
You know, I think in, in some respects, we're, there's still envy amongst other cities and people of Murray. Name another city in Salt Lake County that you can drive around and see signs that say I love my, we love our police. I think that's, that's what we need. We need the support, and I, we get it, you know? And I know there's support from, from the council and the mayor, and that continued support means a lot. And, you know, there's, we know there's people in the community, there are people in the community that care and, yeah. Getting that kind of, of support is what helps. I mean, yes, money, money matters and that, that helps immediately, but we all know that we can throw a lot of money at things, and if there are other problems, that doesn't fix the other problems. It just kind of takes the edge off of it for a minute. And I think we're in a good place with the community, and I, and I think continued support in any way that, that we can get it on the outside is, is very much appreciated as well.
Awesome. I think we owe it to you and the staff and the police officers and just your whole team to do something in recognition of these times. I mean, I can't even imagine what it would be like, but to sustain people is what I would love to see, and the longevity of hiring somebody now to be with us for 20 to 30 years would be amazing. And continually have these conversations instead of going to another agency, so.
No, we, and that's what we want to see. For years, that's what Murray is. We retire people. We don't necessarily lose people. I mean, they, it happens, but the vast majority of our, of our employees that, that come and go, they retire. And I know things are different and there's a lot of things that have changed, but that's still, still that way. In fact, you know, we have almost 20% of our department right now is, are retirement eligible. Other people we're trying to hang on to. We don't want to lose them either, but that's, that's, you know, 30% are, have less than five and 20% have more than 20. So, you know, there's a little bit of a balance, and we want to hang, hang on to that. And that's, that's, that's why. They come, they stay, they retire, and we'd like to continue with that.
I just have a question. Make sure I'm understanding this clearly. First, I mean, hiring right now is brutal. My day job, the agency, I think we offered a job to seven people before we found someone willing to take it for the pay at the state that we could offer. So we have to be competitive. I want to make sure I'm understanding. So the proposal says step three, does that mean it's not the intro wage?
No. What, what we're looking at right now and what we're proposing is to take and kind of cut off the first two steps of our step plan. Start on three. And then take everybody that's in that step plan now and move them forward, go three steps up until they redline.
I get you. Okay. That makes, that makes more sense.
That would help with the...
I was reading it wrong.
Otherwise, we'd have compression in those first few years.
Absolutely. And then I'm looking at the recently updated ranges, those averages. And I see we've got all these cities that are researching, except Riverton, who seems unworried. I'm curious what they're going to do. No shade, Riverton. But the ones that are researching, they're not included in that updated one, I assume, because they are making changes as we speak.
Correct.
If that's available, when you come back to the council, could, could you bring those numbers, too, just so we have a more updated?
As, as they change and they change regularly, we would be glad to...
Absolutely. Yeah, I would just be really interested to see where they land as well with that information. But it seems like it is putting us in a competitive space, and we need to, we need to have the best officers we can. So thank you. That was my question.
I think Robin is living this right now, so she will have updated information.
And she's done a lot of work putting all this together and getting comparisons from around the valley and helping us put this together, so.
All right, Chief, I think you've got your answer, hopefully. I think we're all very supportive.
Well, we appreciate, appreciate the support, and, you know, it's, it's a good step, and we're trying to do the best we can and want to hang on to the good people, so thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Before you leave that, Madam Chair, I think Brenda had a...
I'm just going to say, I have a budget opening that is coming forward next, with the public hearing in the next, and I will just include this, $412,000 or whatever it is. That is salaries plus benefits for, for all of the steps to get them to not be compressed. So that will be included with the next budget opening.
Okay, great.
So it won't be a separate thing, it'll be in that public hearing, it'll be there.
Is that on the second, the next council meeting?
Yes, the next council meeting. And then I believe we could probably make it effective at the beginning of a pay period. It can't go in the middle. That creates headaches beyond belief, but at the beginning of whatever the next pay period is.
That's the seventh is the, yeah.
Yeah. So.
Okay. Thank you. All right, that is the end of our discussion items. So Jennifer, do you have announcements for us? No announcements, we're adjourned. See you again at 10, at 6:30, not 10.
News at 10.